Our invocation will be provided by Opal Cunningham, a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Opal.
Father, we come to you to ask to be with each and every one here, be with those who may be on their way here and those who are out traveling. Guide us, protect us and keep us safe. Be with those during the meeting that the meeting may go well. Be with those who have prepared the meeting and who will serve it. May we listen to what has been, what will be said and be with each and every one. Send your angels down to guide us and protect us and keep us safe. I say this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
All right, next we have citizens' requests. We have, I believe it's Walter Capps. Walter, are you here? Walter Capps, very good. Come on up, Walter.
So I will apologize, I'm a little nervous. I'm Walter Capps, I live at 310 East Hurford Avenue, 64055. I've been in the city ever since I was five and I was taken away from my parents. I'm here to talk to you tonight because I have been homeless twice in the city. I've known a lot of other people who are homeless and a lot of people who are struggling. And I want to speak on their behalf because I know a lot of people don't have the courage. I've wanted to speak about this before, about a year ago, but I got cold feet because I was too nervous to talk about this. The, and I do think there's a big issue with people just not caring. And I really want to speak on this. So the straightforward idea that I've come up with, because we all know what the issues with homeless people are and whatnot, we know their struggle, you know, and I don't, and I personally don't believe it's because they've done anything wrong or anything like that. I think they've just been going through a lot, something happened to them in their life, and now they're in a situation that they can't get out of or that's hard for them to get out of. And I understand there are programs like, you know, the Housing Authority, Together Independence and all this stuff. I've tried talking with some of them, but the waiting lists are just really long. So my solution that I'm proposing is we can take areas like the 40 and Highway Lot where Toys R Us used to be, or anything like where the old Kmart was, you know, like redistrict these areas and turn these into a community service projects where we can make homeless shelters. Or, you know, like, you know, and I really think, I have a little list here about the, specifically the 40 and Highway. I mean, we can turn the Toys R Us itself, you know, that where it used to be into a shelter where people can go and have beds to sleep in so that in the winter they don't have to freeze to death and worry about being cold. And over, you could turn the old hometown buffet into like a little kitchenette. They could cook, you know, we can, over in the Cinema 6 area, which is a good distance away, you can have like a little rehab center to keep all of that, you know, away from the main area and have a place for those and save a spot. Because I don't, because, you know, the only reason why people do drugs is because they're in a desperate situation that they don't, can't get out of. And the easiest way to feel better is, you know, for them to do that. You know, I have then, I've dealt with SI in my life before, suicidal ideation, you know, and it's, you know, I struggle with that even today. Because I didn't have my parents growing up. I worked. When I was homeless the first time, I had a good Christian man help me out. I worked at FedEx Ground and I biked there every day on 210 Highway going down 291 on a bicycle. I did that for nine months. You tell me that's not working hard. You tell me I didn't work as hard as I could and I got the place, but the place got sold to a rental company. And they wanted to get rid of me as soon as my lease was up because they wanted to remodel the place and resell it and raise it to a rent that I could not afford. So I was homeless again. And that time I went to New Orleans because I didn't want to be cold in the winter, you know, and I came back up here due to different circumstances and my aunt is helping me out now. But there are people who don't have that kind of support where they can get help, you know. You know, we can also maybe add something specifically for like, you know, veterans who are homeless too. And I've met, because I've met a lot of these people. I slept under that bridge over by Sterling Road by the old Walmart before.
You have been in it?
You know, I've been offered, you know, this, you know, drugs and stuff. And I've always said no, but you know, I know it's a really appealing offer to people who don't have anything. And the only way to overpower that offer is with an offer of love. Because that's the ultimate thing that will make people feel better. You know, if we can be loving, and you know, this commutes are, no, it wouldn't be easy. You all would have to redistrict, you know, it would take a lot of work. But I think if you tell people, hey, we're doing this project, you know, to give you all a place to stay, would you come and help? And I bet you anything they would come and volunteer to help. You know, I don't think these people are lazy, you know, they do try to be right by God from what I've talked with, you know, and... I don't know, I'm losing my train of thought here and like I said, I'm very anxious, so I apologize. But, you know, it's just an idea that I've come up with and I wanted to explain the story because like I, because at the end of the Lorax it says, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing will ever get there. It's not. And I feel like I care a whole awful lot and I really hope the people of this council does too. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Next is Tom, is it Gibkin? Hi, Tom.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Tom Gibkin, I live at 2201 East Jerika Road here in Independence. And I'm the President of CWA, Communication Workers of America Local 6360. And we represent the 911 dispatchers here in Independence. And I suggest that if you ever have time, go sit with the 911 dispatchers on a Friday night or a Saturday night and watch what they do and listen to what the calls they take. They don't know what that call is going to be. It could be a dog barking, it could be my neighbor's music is too loud, it could be my, my schizophrenic son went into the bedroom and locked the door and he has a weapon. It just, my husband's passed out, he's turning purple, I need help. Well, with the help of Adam Norris and Samantha Morris, we at the Communication of Workers, we were able to negotiate a memorandum of understanding which you guys are going to discuss tonight. And it has, it's going to really take care of some staffing problems. Right now, Independence has a terrible staffing shortage, but we were able to come together and work to address that and we think we're going to have some success with that. And we were also in the negotiations, able to take care of the current members that are dedicated and working up to 16 hours a day with an eight-hour turnaround. And if we can get fully staffed, it'll alleviate a lot of those problems and it will be very good for the citizens of Independence. So I encourage you to pass that today. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next one is Robert Brackenberry, is it Brackenberry or Brackenberg?
Good evening.
Robert. And Robert, if I, I hate to interrupt, but could you please state your address, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Cogan Lane, Independence, Missouri, 64050.
Perfect, thank you.
It could be said that your number one responsibility is public safety. The large majority of Independence voters are not present tonight. Are you really prepared to respond to the pressure from an activist minority at the expense of public safety? I keep hearing, it's not the breed, it's the owner. Maybe that's right, I don't know. If over 50% of serious dog attacks nationwide can be attributed to pit bull type dogs, what does that say about the owners? If the ban gets dropped and people get mauled as a result, is the city prepared for the legal and electoral repercussions? Is this the hill everybody wants their political careers to die on? Are we, you know, we're talking life and death, not parking violations. The people who own pit bulls and live in Independence are in violation of the law.
You have one minute.
If really the must, the gumption can't be mustered or the funds to enforce the law now, how are we going to face the constituents after it all goes bad? I think the statistics are pretty clear. The result of lifting the ban is predictable. It's going to be at the expense of public safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Next up is Teresa Tweedy. Teresa, come on up and please state your address.
Mayor, Council and Clerk, my name is Terry Tweedy. I live at 3111 South Arrowhead Drive, Independence, Missouri. Vaccin statistics seem to hold no merit whatsoever when the pit bull dog lobby is worth millions of dollars. What other dog group has its very own lobby? None. There's a reason for that, of which I've ran out of time to go into that. But the petition that everybody signed clearly states on here, I'll read it again, although I sent everybody a copy, it says, "Do here unto affix our signatures petitioning the City Council to submit to the voters this ordinance about getting rid of the ban." That is so clear. And I've had many people call me and say, that is so misleading because didn't the council just decide it's okay by them? Yeah, they did. I understand that they're concerned about the cost of everything.
You have one minute.
What is the cost to us if we have a serious illness or death because of pit bull dog fags? You lift the ban and more and more of these dogs will be here in Independence. More will be bred, more will be sold, and we're going to have a bigger problem than we do right now. If you don't hire more animal control officers, we run a real risk of the same injury and death as what happened before. It will happen. LA just, the city of LA just paid out 6.8 million to a pit bull dog person that was a victim. And two weeks before that, in Georgia, there was a $5.6 million to the victims from the city and another one from the county, and the list goes on and on. This is really what we could be facing, we've got to face those facts. So the cost to our city to put it on the ballot for $200,000 is nothing in comparison to these lawsuits I could show you if I had more time. I ask you to please reconsider not repealing this ban until better dog laws are enacted and the city can put it on a ballot as stated in this petition.
Thank you. And that's all of citizens' requests. So that now brings us to our I-STAR presentation.
Bill number 23-746, a resolution recognizing Holly Drayer, Payroll Manager with the Human Resources Department as the I-STAR Award recipient for June 2023.
And I've just got a couple of comments to say about Holly, but reasons for nominating Holly. Holly is over the top, she gets things done. She is a self-starter who works above and beyond on a daily basis for the city's payroll managers. In the last several years working with Holly, I can truly say our payroll department has ran in the most efficient manner possible and she has been recognized and, and recognized for her continued efforts to ensure that all 1,000-plus city employees are paid every week and on time. Not only does Holly do her job in an excellent manner, but she is also constantly looking for ways to improve the payroll process for others. And in the last year, she formulated an Excel document that is used to import time entries for all of the fire suppression employees, which saves hours of daily entry. So thank you, Holly, for that. Holly treats all employees and her peers with the utmost respect and is quick to respond with questions and inquiries. One of the best things about Holly is that she is proactive and doesn't wait for problems to arise. Her communication skills are top-notch. Holly is respected by all of her fellow employees and she truly is an asset to the city of Independence. And, and there was another one here, real quickly, to my knowledge, her experience and how she treats others is incredibly positive. She conveys a positive attitude. Her performance is always over and above and she demonstrates the highest degree of knowledge within her division. So she is just one of those employees that we love to work with and we consider her an asset for the city. So Holly, I am proud to give you the I-STAR Award for this month. So where's Holly at? Come on up, Holly. And can I have a motion in a second to approve the I-STAR recipient?
Still moved.
Second. We've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Okay, please proceed, Madam City Clerk.
Whereas everyday 100 Americans are killed by gun violence and on average there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, are in our best position to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiah Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. Whereas to help honor Hadiah and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short and countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2023, the first Friday in June, as the 8th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to all we can do to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Rory R. Rowland, City of Independence declares the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Is Deborah here to receive the? But wait, there's more.
Whereas the Harry S. Truman Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution recognized Flag Day, whereas June 14th, 2023 is the 107th anniversary of the National Flag Day as determined by the Second Continental Congress and the Flag Act of June 14th, 1777, making the 13 red and white striped flag with 13 stars on a field of blue representing our first states. And whereas our patriot ancestors risking their lives and fortunes to form a new perfect nation based on the Jeffersonian ideal of equality, led by democratically ruled government and a free and open system of education to train citizen leaders. Whereas the Flag Acts of 1794 and 1818 were enacted by Congress to provide for the modern rule of having stripes to represent the colonies and having the number of stars match the number of states. And whereas the Great Conflict of the Civil War, found Union officers determined to maintain the Union of our great nation, joined together for the preservation of peace, rallied their troops under the flag of the United States of America. And whereas on May 30th, 1916, President Woodrow Wilson called for the nationwide observance of Flag Day and President Harry S. Truman signed Congress decree making June 14th each year National Flag Day, a time when Americans can reflect on the foundation of our nation's freedom. And whereas Americans also remember their loyalty to the Union, reaffirm their beliefs in liberty and justice and all that they gave so that we might freely meet here today. Now therefore Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence hereby proclaims June 14th, 2023 as Flag Day.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Are there any folks who would like to, any councilmembers who would like to pull any of the items for separate consideration? Going once, going twice, all right. We will consider the consent agenda right now. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
And the consent agenda is in fact approved 7 to 0. This brings us to our first public hearing. We'll open that public hearing, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the Hub Drive Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, Redevelopment Area and Redevelopment Project. This is a full public hearing.
Is there any wish, please proceed. I jumped the gun, please forgive me.
Good evening, David Martin, Gilmore and Bell, serve as Bond and Economic Development Council to the city. And this first public hearing is with respect to the Hub Drive Redevelopment Plan. And it relates to the approval of that plan, the designation of blight and a redevelopment area, and then also the approval of the project within that plan. The public hearing actually also relates to an item under First Reading that is Bill 23042, which is the actual approval of the project in addition to the bill that's listed under public hearing. I'd like to start by offering onto the record the exhibit list. This is the same list of exhibits relating to the formation of the TIF that were in the agenda packet and they are items 1 through 8. If you could accept those onto the record?
Yes, could you hand them to Mr. Clover, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. And it's Clover, please forgive me, Jeremy. Please proceed.
So I'm going to start by just giving a high-level view of what this TIF seeks to achieve and the different tools that it uses. And then I'm going to turn it over to the developer and his group and they're going to describe what they're actually going to try to do and some more of the specifics of how they're going to get it done. So this is a, what we kind of refer to as a kitchen sink TIF where we include a variety of different incentives that work together in effort to capture the right amount of revenue in order to produce the incentive necessary to fill a funding gap essentially for the developer to complete the project. And so it's a $12 million gap that we're trying to fill. And the incentives used to reach that are tax increment financing, which has two components. One of them is going to be used in its full capacity and that is the capture of the increase in sales tax revenue that is anticipated to come through this redevelopment. So we refer to that as economic activity taxes. By law, 50% of that increased amount is captured and can be used for the project and the other 50% flows to the taxing jurisdictions. The base or the current existing amount of economic activity taxes, those sales taxes that the price chopper and the other businesses are currently producing, that will be frozen and continue to flow to the taxing jurisdictions in addition to half of the increment. The reason I started with economic activity taxes, normally here people will talk about the payments in lieu of tax or the property tax increment first, is that we have mirrored in accordance with the city's economic development policy that portion of the incentive off of the economic activity taxes. So in a normal TIF, you can capture 100% of the increase in the property tax, but in this TIF, the request and the plan describes only a 50% capture. So the taxing jurisdictions are able to share in the benefit from the project from day one instead of having to wait until the TIF expires. So the other components of the kitchen sink are CID, a TDD and Chapter 100 bonds. And the way those components fit in with the plan is they will generate the CID and TDD each a 1% sales tax in addition to the city and county's other taxes that apply to this project. They will be subject to capture at that 50% rate, which will go into the Special Allocation Fund and become TIF revenue. And then the other half, the uncaptured half, will be used for CID and TDD eligible components of this same project. So public improvements and with a TDD, those that specifically relate to transportation. The final component of this plan is to use Chapter 100 bonds. The city has issued these in the past for a few different projects. Normally, the major component is the abatement of real property tax. The ownership in these bond structures by the city can accomplish a number of things, property tax abatement being the most common. Another side effect is that if the city owns the project during construction, the construction materials that are purchased for that project are exempt from sales taxation. In this circumstance, we're not trying to exercise the property tax exemption component. We're focused just on the sales tax exemption from construction materials. So that plan is modeled to coincide with the TIF plan. It will only be in place during the construction period. It will mirror what was going to happen anyway under the TIF plan during that time period. As project components are completed, they will come out of the Chapter 100, back onto the TIF, start producing that real property tax increment that's going to fund that $12 million gap. In the materials that were provided as part of the agenda packet and also in the exhibits that I presented, there's a blight study in which an analysis was done showing the blighting conditions that currently exist at the project site, mainly deterioration of existing site improvements and in fact, the purpose- And in fact, the purpose of the TIF-funded improvements is to renovate and reface that shopping center and give it a fresh and updated exterior, including addressing some items such as sidewalk and facade deterioration that were becoming dangerous potentially to the public. This request does involve the issuance of bonds, and I know that this is a very important issue to many of you up on the dais and certainly is with respect to city staff and our analysis of this project, that bonds be issued only in a manner that provides no recourse to the city or any other political subdivision for the payment of those bonds. So under this plan, bonds would be issued not by the city directly but by a conduit issuer like the city's Industrial Development Authority or the Missouri Development Finance Board. And the city's involvement would solely be to transfer the TIF revenues generated by the project to the bond trustee. In this circumstance, any shortfall of that basket of revenues that I described versus the TIF bonds issued would not result in a request by the bond trustee or a bondholder of the city to make up the gap on that shortfall. The bondholder would simply be at risk for that difference, and the revenues that are generated would continue to flow to the bonds. And to the extent of the shortfall, the bondholders would lose a portion of their investment. So a few positive components of this plan in addition to that avoidance of risk in the issuance of bonds is this plan does provide $1 million for the city's 23rd Street Corridor Street Improvement Project. And it comes with a recommendation of city staff and also unanimous support from the TIF Commission. So I'll turn it over at this time to the developer, and then after their presentation, if you have any questions for me or the developer, feel free.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's John Hanson with IRR Corporate and Public Finance with offices at 1901 West 47th Place in Westwood, Kansas, here in the Kansas City area. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present for you this evening. We have a number of representatives from the development team here. I have my colleagues, James Quaney and Colin Bram here from IRR. We have Dave Francé, legal counsel to the developer. And in just a moment, I'll turn things over to Rich Doobie, President of Triland Properties, who is the owner and developer of the project. Rich?
Thank you, John. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity. So I'm going to start with talking a little bit about, each of you have seen this same development. So I'm going to, not short circuit it, but I'm going to run through it a little quicker than we did in the past. So you know where the property is on 291 and 23rd Street. And this is what we're going to talk about this evening. My company, Triland Properties, is 44 years old. We're a full-service company. We've been in business and have done this for the last 44 years. So this is not new to us. We specialize in supermarket-anchored redevelopments, much like the hub. And these are some of the companies that we've worked for over the 44 years. We've also done four other projects here in both Kansas, Missouri, and Kansas City, Kansas, as shown here, Antioch and Overland Park, Shawnee Mission in Shawnee, Kansas, Olafay and Blue Springs at Highway 7 and 40. So this is a redevelopment of Cherokee South. On the left is what it looked like when we bought it. On the right is the after-appearance. This was Shawnee Mission Parkway with, again, images on the left and redevelopment on the right. And this is some components about the hub, just so that you understand it. The project is now 50 years old. The two outlots, which are Firestone and Burger King, were built in 1990. The rest of it was all built 50 years ago. So our vision for this property is really to bring it up to code so that it can go for another 50 years. I mean, it truly is a worn-out piece of real estate. Still functions reasonably well, but without more attention, it's going to deteriorate faster. This is the existing site plan, showing where the Advance Auto is, the Price Chopper store, Firestone out in the outlot, and the existing Burger King. This is a picture taken when the building Red Rocks was in was demolished. And I was just over there today, so a quick trip is ready to open. And it's, I think, a welcome addition to us. It's a nice gateway into what's going to look like a brand-new center when we're done. So the future of the hub. What Dave Martin talked a little bit about is building facades, replace the roofs, parking lots, sidewalks. The big thing for us is organizing the traffic flow and making that parking lot safer for the public, flattening part of it out so that it's not as steep a slope. That's pretty hard to get rid of totally, but we were able to flatten it out from the first 150 feet from the building. Add four new outlot buildings, downsize the Price Chopper, which is now too large. It leases 104,000 feet. It operates in 86,000 feet. And it's going to operate in 70,000 feet, which is consistent with supermarket sizes today as 2023 is with us. So here's what the redevelopment of the site plan would look like. The yellow buildings represent the new buildings that will be added to the property. The blue line off on the right is part of the Price Chopper building that'll be demolished. The next piece that says, inside the green line, shows you that when Price Chopper reduces their store to what's shown on the plan as the size of the Price Chopper, will add another anchor tenant to the center. So four new buildings, a new anchor tenant, and that Burger King building will be demolished and repositioned as you see it on this site. Is that a bad thing?
However, to answer that sigh, it's not going to be, it's going to be demolished and rebuilt. So there will be a Burger King there. So I just thought I would throw that in there.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And this just shows a little bit, a detail of what I was talking about. The blue line represents the demolition. Two new out parcels on 23rd Street. The green line represents what Price Chopper operates in today. And the bottom arrows illustrate what it will operate in when it's reduced to 70,000 feet, leaving a 17,000-foot anchor. Top picture shows what it is today. Bottom view is what it will appear like after renovation. Here's an aerial shot of what it is going to appear like when complete, that Price Chopper rendition. And this rendering is pretty close to what it looks like today. This is what Price Chopper will look like, consistent with some of the new Price Choppers built in the Kansas side and the Missouri side over the last three to four years. This is a view from 23rd Street. That shows the repositioned Burger King mayor that is on the property.
Repositions does not mean demolished, destroyed, and forever gone.
And two new out parcels there, and then another view of what would be the anchor tenant. And the Price Chopper logo will still be seen from 23rd Street. This is a view of some of the buildings, starting with Dollar Tree looking to the south. And here's Oak Street Health, which is the south part of the property, looking to the north. And we did this because it'll improve the appearance, will bring new customers, it will add new sales. It will, quite frankly, be, in our opinion, something the city can point to in the future for some of the other redevelopments that are necessary, I think, in the City of Independence. And at that point, if there's any questions that I can answer, if not, I'm going to give this back to John Hanson, and he's going to talk about the hub, looking at the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I'll be brief and run through some of the numbers with respect to the project and attempt not to be duplicative of things that David Martin already covered. So the project is approximately a $36 million total private investment in order to deliver the vision that Rich just described. The project's estimated return on investment without the incentives that we've been discussing this evening is 0.53%, creating a gap to financial feasibility to delivering that incentive. The tools needed to fill the gap, David Martin already reviewed. I won't go over those again. But with approval, that increases the return on the project to approximately 10.20%. That's a return that's financeable and that we can move forward with if the council so approves. To run into that just a little more detail, the sources of funding, that $36 million that I just described is approximately 7% funded by TIF Pilots and TIF Eats. Those are those incremental property taxes and incremental sales taxes that we were just discussing. The balance of the project is funded by private investment and by the CID and TDD. To drill into that in a little more detail, the TIF produces, again, approximately 7% or $2.6 million of the $36 million funding. The CID and TDD is broken down for you and represents approximately 26% of the funding. That's between the CID sales tax special assessment and TDD sales tax. And then the balance, 67%, is private investment. Within the cost-benefit analysis and the TIF plan that you have before you tonight is a table that looks substantially similar to this. It describes the benefits to each of the taxing jurisdictions during the term of the tax increment finance. The city is on the top row here and is estimated to benefit to the tune of $5.1 million over the life of the TIF. The jurisdictions, the taxing jurisdictions revenues available the year after the TIF expires is in the following table. The city is estimated to experience new revenues above where it is today from tax revenues from the Hub Shopping Center in an amount of approximately $600,000. The other taxing jurisdictions are listed here as well. Local taxing jurisdictions together, approximately $1 million of annual additional benefit. In the state of Missouri, approximately another million. The benefits to the city are shown in this graphic. I'll run through these and touch on them. I already mentioned the $36 million total investment, 7% funded by TIF. That translates to about $180,000 upon stabilization of new revenue to the city. A million dollars toward the 23rd Street Corridor Project, as was previously mentioned. A revitalization and redevelopment of a shopping center that has seen its better days and needs to be revitalized and put on a trajectory for another several decades of positive growth. $5.1 million in direct city tax revenue benefit over 23 years, creating over 150 full-time equivalent construction jobs to redevelop the shopping center, creating and retaining permanent jobs at the center. $800,000 in retained annual tax revenues for the city. So it freezes that base going to the city from property and sales tax revenue. And again, approximately $600,000 in new annual tax revenue for the city after the end of the term. The benefits are described here similarly, but in more detail. I'll move on. This slide reiterates the important points that David Martin addressed with respect to the bonds, but I think that bear repeating. First, the city will not be responsible for any debt service payments with respect to the bonds. It doesn't create a payment risk for the city with respect to the bonds and does not require any guaranteeing of revenue by the city for the bonds. We'll select another issuer like the IDAA or MDFB or other conduit issuer so that the city does not have to issue those bonds. And this TIF and other set of incentives are 100% in alignment with the city's economic development policy. Other points, advantages of the plan that we'd like to remind and reiterate, this maintains the current levels of tax revenues to the city from the Hub Shopping Center, freezing that base, and then provides a sharing of 50% of both property taxes and sales taxes with not only the city but with all taxing jurisdictions. We have a fairly light request here with respect to TIF revenue as a percentage of costs. The economic development policy has guidelines of 15% to 20%. We're below 8 or at approximately 7, as I mentioned on a previous slide. The entire plan that you have before you and the cost-benefit analysis has been subject to your staff's review, your advisors of the city's review. And all questions that we are aware of have been answered at this point. And this facilitates the redevelopment of the Hub Shopping Center in a fashion that assures its long-term viability. So with that, we respectfully request the city council's support of the redevelopment, including the actions before you tonight. And our entire team stands ready to answer any questions that you might have or receive any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Hobart was first, and then Mr. Steinmeier.
Okay. That's fine, I'll go quick.
Who wants to go first here? I mean, I want to be respectful of everyone here.
I'll go, I'll go quick.
Okay.
This is for Mr. Martin, if you, just a couple of questions. Mr. Martin, what's your position and role in this project?
Serving as Economic Development Council to the city, so working with city staff.
Okay, so you have a legal obligation. The city's hired you to make sure that you represent our interests legally in this endeavor.
That's correct.
And thank you very much to the developer for outlining the very specific and important issue. But I want, would like Mr. Martin to confirm that. The city won't owe any money if part of this project fails. It won't, but in the event that it did, the city won't owe any money. Is that right?
The city's only obligation will be to transfer TIF revenues. There will be no circumstance in which the city is required to make a payment from any other funds. So, correct, you will not owe any money to anyone in the circumstance that the project experiences a partial or total failure.
Appreciate your help on this, Mr. Martin. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I had exactly the same question. People are a little twitchy about the city being guarantor, being on the hook. So you're probably going to get that question a dozen more times. Thank you for the reassurance that the city.
This was structured with that specifically in mind and to avoid that result.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, councilor, chairman?
Yeah, I, I've always had a lot of nervousness when we start talking about TIFs. But having had the time to meet with Triland, this group has been extremely professional, has met with all the council members that wanted to meet or be involved in it. I went to their open house, wonderfully done. I listened to the businesses that were in that, that structure or in the project vicinity. They're excited about it. The residents that showed up were excited about it. They got some good cookies, some good coffee, and were free to ask all the questions that they felt compelled to ask. And I have to say, this is only, well, only, it's the second development group that has come in and done it the right way. They've made themselves available, they've partnered with the city, they've listened to the community. And I think that they have a track record that is really very favorable. And we're, in my estimation, we're very blessed to have this group wanting to come in and take on a project in an area that desperately needs a shot in the city arms, so to speak. So I appreciate you coming and letting us know as a community what our obligation is. Our obligation is, when this is built, you go show up and you shop and you spend money and help make this work. But I'm grateful for this opportunity to be a part of our city moving forward. I think it'll well-serve our community. They have one other question, Mayor.
Go right ahead, no worries.
And I did ask a question to the development group about local labor. Labor's important in this community. And where available, I asked that they have an opportunity to come to the table and bid on the work. And we had this conversation.
We did.
And the answer from you is?
Absolutely.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We're here to partner with the city and the constituents within it and the businesses within it.
And I appreciate that. Labor, like I said, labor is very important in this city. If you've driven around our square, and I'm sure you have, you probably have seen the groups that are represented. But we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to bid on the work and have a seat at that table.
Thank you for asking the question, and we're committed to do it.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So the businesses that are currently there, there's also a, there's a Department of Revenue Office and a Highway Patrol Officer. Are those staying or going? What's going to happen with them?
Well, at the moment, they're both staying. The The licensing group, not the sheriff's group, but the licensing group, they've been out of lease for approximately eight months, waiting for the state to redo their license. So we, we plan to remodel that whole premise that they're in, downsize them to a more appropriate size. With regard to the state, we're in negotiations with them right now. Our intent is to keep them there, but they're way in too much, too much space, and they don't need it.
So is there going to be any more available locations once you're done, or are they all filled out?
No, there right now is one 4,400-foot vacancy that's still there. And between the state and this licensing group, in the back of the center, it's 8,000 square feet that's not rented. All that we've repositioned so we can put 7,000 feet of that 8,000 feet to be used. So there's approximately 11,000 feet of inline space that's going to be leased to new users that aren't there today.
So you mentioned you did the area there, 7 and 40 highway?
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar with the Tokyo Grill that's there? There's a Japanese steakhouse called Tokyo Grill.
I'm not, no.
Okay, well, it's amazing, so it'd be very awesome if you could bring that to Independence.
Next time I'm here, I will be down there.
We're not going to talk restaurants here, okay? We're not going to do that, but thank you. We'll proceed.
Anything else? That it?
Anyone else, other questions? Anybody else? I just want to, if I may, to our bond counsel if we could come up, and I'm going to, I'm going to basically repeat Councilman Rehobart's question. TIF in our city unfortunately is a flatter word. So we will only be obligated for the TIF, and that is basically the money that comes in from the sales taxes at these locations that we will pass on to the developer for part of the financing for the project.
It's sales and property tax increment, but correct. Those are the TIF revenues, and the city's obligation is to transfer those to the bond trustee, which then uses them to make payments on the bonds.
And then the other question, and you know this one's coming, do you want to take a guess at it or shall I just go ahead and hit it?
Go ahead, but I think I know where you're going.
You know where I'm going, and with this, this city, we've had tremendous gnashing and grinding of teeth over an issue where we were responsible for a bond for a developer if the project in fact failed, and we've had to pay money for that. And we want to assure the citizens that this council is not going to act in any way, shape or form that will put this city at risk going forward, because when we're off this council in 10 or 15 years and this thing fails, if it, and I'm not saying that it will, sir, I'm not saying that at all, but I have an obligation for the citizens in this room, and you obviously know that. But if it were to fail, the city is on the hook for nothing more than the TIF revenues that will flow through and the property tax revenues that will flow through, but we will not have to write a check in any way, shape or form to guarantee this project.
That's correct. The deals that you're referring to had a provision in them that said.
Well, we don't have to go there. I mean, that's okay. We don't have to go there. That's, we don't need to go down that rabbit hole. We all know about that rabbit hole, but I understand.
There was a provision that required that, that will not exist in this transaction.
Exactly, and that's why this body is absolutely so certain of asking that question. I want to, I want to thank all of you for your hard work. I want to thank you for your accommodation, all the questions we've asked. You know, we've asked this question a number of times when we've met in the meetings prior to this, and I just want to make sure that it's recorded on city council on a number of occasions that this has in fact been asked. So I cannot say thank you enough for, for investing in our city and also for being so willing to work with us to make sure that we protect the citizens going forward in case anything negative happens. I know it won't. You've been incredibly successful in many, many locations. I know this will be successful. I want it to be successful, but also we have an obligation that in case it doesn't, that we do our due diligence to make sure that we're covered. And I just want to thank you for that. Anyone else, any other questions? I know we've beaten this one to death. This is a full public hearing, so does anyone want to come and speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone want to speak in favor and opposition? You can come on up and come to the podium, please. And please state your name and address, please, just so we know.
Teresa Hoflicker. Live at 1630 North State Route 7 in Independence.
If you can get close to the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for letting me speak today. And I just, whenever I go to Independence Center and Walmart, all those areas in there which I go to quite frequently, it, the weeds and everything look horrendous. And the, over by Joann's and the Dollar Store and the Gym, it just, and then the Dunkin' Donuts is boarded up. It's just, it's embarrassing. What, and the pictures on this look so beautiful. What is going to keep that from the weeds growing up and, and how do we, I mean, what does a citizen do?
Right, now, that's a great question, and if I could bring someone up from the development group, how will you handle it in your location going forward? Do you have any other questions?
No, I did go in and ask one time at Joann's and the Dollar Tree, and I'm like, what do we do? And, you know, their advice to me was, well, the developer doesn't live in our community, and so there's, you know, there's, they're like in Texas or something, you know, so I don't know what to tell you, lady, but the potholes and everything are just, you know, my new car gets out of alignment, I'm, you know, you know what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
But, so anyway, that's all. Thank you for listening to me.
No, absolutely. It's a great question, and I have that question too. So how will you handle it in your development?
Let me take a run of this. So first of all, we have local representation that we always hire, so we have managers here that take care of our Cherokee South project and take care of the hub. So there's somebody at the property every day, at least four hours a day. That's number one. Number two, when you restructure a shopping center like this, many of the leases don't have good common area maintenance clauses in them. All that is changing, and that includes Price Shopper. Price Shopper right now takes care of almost two-thirds of that property on their own. And then supposedly does Burger King. All that comes back to us as a developer, and we're very used to doing this to keep it up, because when we get in a position of putting financing on it, we don't want to be answering questions to finance people. So I can just tell you that after 44 years in business, one of our hallmarks is keep them clean and keep them green, and a lot of people continue to come to us. So all of our tenants know the budgets that we put together that's going to increase their cost, but the result is that they'll have an environment that is much more suitable to increasing sales over time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor or in opposition? You can come on up and speak in favor or opposition, but please keep it on this project, if you could, please. Okay, thank you. She had a flip-flop flop?
So Carrie Beatty, 423 North Grand Avenue. I shop at that Price Shopper, that's my store. I actually go everywhere in there. And so if this gets approved or whatever, is it going to close while you guys are doing the building?
Okay. That's your question?
Yeah.
Right, will it close? I don't think it will, but I, I'll let the developer answer that question. You bet. Thank you.
Nothing will close. The property will be open. In fact, Price Shopper already has some of their fixtures in the store as we speak, kind of hidden, but they're sitting there, so they're ready to start even before we are. We're planning to start in September. They may start a little bit earlier in terms of the interior of the store. Everybody will stay open and will accommodate the tenants during that construction period.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, I will close this public hearing then.
Bill number 23-039, an ordinance approving the Hub Drive Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, establishing a redevelopment area, designating the redevelopment area as a blighted area, making other required findings for the redevelopment plan, designating a developer, approving a redevelopment agreement with the developer, and directing staff to implement the redevelopment plan.
Thank you. We'll open the public, well, no, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just for discussion, very briefly. I just wanted to make a statement real quickly. I wanted to thank Tri-Land and Mr. Doobie for coming across state lines and drinking some of our water. It took us, it took us a long time to be able to get you over here, but it's the right time, so thank you very much. You put together a good team, they presented everything honestly and openly, and took the time to explain it to us, with the, with local folks too. That means a lot to us, thank you. Mr. Martin, as always, of course, thank you for your hard work. Mr. Walker and your staff, you know, this should serve as notice to the residents of Independence that we are changing the way we do economic development. And you can do projects, big projects, good projects, with folks that are interested in doing business here without giving away the farm. You can do that without potentially indebted, in debting the city to, to an unmeatable level. So I, I want to make sure that everybody watching and everybody in here realizes this. The next time you get frustrated, and we all get frustrated about things around town, just realize, change takes time, but today, this project, should we approve it? This is a marked step in the right direction. This is how successful cities do business. So kudos to Mr. Walker, you and your staff. You've put together a project that meets our expectations. Thank you.
Anyone else, other comments? And then we'll open up our next public hearing. This is our second public hearing. We have one more after this, just to give you a heads up. So this will open it, and Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the formation of the Hub Drive Community Improvement District. This is a full public hearing.
Dave Martin, again, as Becky just mentioned, this purpose of this public hearing is to determine whether or not to form the Community Improvement District that we just discussed. It will impose a 1% sales tax on the shopping center and a 50 cent per square foot of leasable area special assessment that will be used to fund a portion of that $12 million funding gap that we discussed. And it will also be imposed for a duration of no longer than 27 years by statute, and this particular CID, in connection with the formation, they're requesting a blight determination which can be made based off of the blight study that was submitted with the TIF plan. And what that does is it allows those funds to be used for the renovation of the private improvements in addition to public improvements related to the project. I don't have a lot more in the way of presentation, but if anyone has a question, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions? Good, okay. Anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to the CID on this project? Anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to the CID on this project? Anyone else here to speak in favor or opposition, or information purposes only, on this project? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
Bill number 23-040, an ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of the Hub Drive Community Improvement District, establishing the district, making findings and authorizing actions related to establishment of the district.
And this will bring us to our, I'll open this public hearing. Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the plan for an industrial development project for the Hub Drive Redevelopment Project. This is a full public hearing.
Okay, please proceed.
As Becky just mentioned, this is relating to the Chapter 100 portion of the incentives that were just described, the purpose of which is to provide sales tax on construction materials. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? And when you were using the term TID earlier, that meant taxable industrial development.
So the TDD is the last component of this, Transportation Development District. Its formation takes a different route than the other incentives that we've discussed tonight. It goes through the court system, and if the TIF plan is approved, describing the TDD as one of its components, as it does, the city will file an answer that agrees with the formation, but that'll be handled in circuit court as opposed to at city council.
Any questions? Okay. Anyone want to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone want to speak in favor of opposition? Anyone want to speak in favor of opposition? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number 23-041, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project, authorizing the City of Independence, Missouri to issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $27,500,000 in connection with the Hub Redevelopment Project, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
And that was the first reading, so we'll proceed to the next non-ordinance items, if I'm correct. Okay, so please proceed, Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 23-748, a resolution repealing resolutions 6386, 6436, and 6486.
Madam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just for clarification, for people who don't know what these resolutions are, Mr. City Manager, would you mind just outlining what you anticipate comes from repealing these resolutions?
I'd be happy to. Councilwoman, members of the council, these three action items in totality placed a five-year moratorium on rates at Independence Power and Light, which was set to expire about one year from now, so it would rescind that resolution, which would be necessary for the other two actions, which would be to rescind the actions taken by the council in 2018 and 19, instituting a 4% and then an additional 2% rate reduction on rates at Independence Power and Light. So this will bring rates back commensurate to what they were in 2012, and then, of course, give the council the authority to do that by rescinding the moratorium that had one year left on it.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
Just a discussion item. I know that Independence Power and Light has produced documents and made presentations to the Public Utility Advisory Board, talking about the intense fiscal impact that this rate reduction had on their ability to remain solvent. Certainly, the 2019 rate reduction in response to COVID, recognizing what a difficult time that was for people. This only returns us to 2012 levels of cost. It does not account for the fact that the city has had enormous inflationary pressure on staffing and materials, et cetera. So I just want people to understand that while this reverses a reduction, it is likely that you will see rate increases in the future to be able to address the increased cost that the city has for running its own utility. Is that a fair assessment?
That is a fair assessment, and thank you for calling attention to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, I, when we first brought this up, I asked about another rate reduction that was given a rate that was created, the municipal rate. And I'm curious, were you able to find what, what it was prior to, what the city was paying prior to and what is paying now? Because it, wasn't it part of that, that, and I wasn't part of the council, so I'm just asking for clarification, but wasn't there for the rate reduction, then was a municipal rate created or was it reduced as well?
A municipal rate was created. We got legal feedback and input on that that said the city could charge itself a rate commensurate to like users, but because we are not an industrial or commercial users, we wouldn't qualify for that rate, so we had to term it as a municipal rate.
So what, I know you don't have this, this answer, I sure would like to have it before we, we vote on this, is what, what does that cost IPL, giving the city a reduced rate?
I, I don't have that number.
I didn't think you did. It's okay. But I would, I would like to know, since it was a trade-off, the city got a reduction in its rate, ratepayers got a reduction in its rate, we're going to take the ratepayers' reduction away, but we're going to maintain the city rate. And I, I would like to know, since we're talking about feasibility, what has it cost IPL to reduce the rate that the city paid prior to that through today? I just would like to know that. And the other thing is, I've also asked for, going on three years, that we have a, a more extensive audit of IPL and the finances, which the council voted down several times, and I still would like to see that happen. I think accountability and transparency for the ratepayers, who are the utility owners, they have a right to know what, what. They have a right to know what, what the financial situation of their utility is. I would like to see these things happen before we start making a, a decision on taking, or, lifting the moratorium. I just think it's fair. I really do. Is there, is there a possibility of doing that before we make a decision on this?
Well, if you remember back to the budget presentation last month, there are two important benefits associated with this. One is the increased financial capacity for IPL, which buys us some time, not permanent solution, but some time to make that financially solvent while we engage in this year-to-two-year-long process of evaluating, and then ultimately letting the public vote on ownership of that. Secondarily, that's going to provide between $600,000 and $700,000 to the general fund. If council weren't to take action on that, the reason I scheduled this for tonight is, I would like every one of those 14 days between now and June 20th to go figure out where we'll cut the $600,000 out of the general fund budget.
No, I understand. And it's really twofold to me. You've got our budget coming up, but we also have, we're being told, a utility that's But in fairness, this, this utility is a, a public utility. It is owned by the public. They have a right to understand and to know, I think, a little more transparency in, in asking for the 6% back. And we may say, well, it's not very much, I get it, because I looked at my bill, I, I look at it often, and it might be $4, $6. But in a time where our economy is, it's all over the place. I mean, you can read about it all, all you want, day to day, our economy is doing weird things, unprecedented things. And I, I would like to know that whatever decision, if we're going to ask our, our ratepayers to, to give back six or eight bucks a month, that, that there's that level of transparency and fairness. So, if we're willing to ask that of, of ratepayers, then we should be willing to ask that of the city, if it's feasible. But we, I need more data, more information to, to make a good informed decision on behalf of ratepayers, which I am one to, so, and I know you are too. So, I think that's, I don't think it's unreasonable, but I understand we're, we're up against the clock. So, I don't know how we move forward, but I'm very uncomfortable just giving a blanket, let's just take away this, this moratorium, because we have to. So, I think there's more questions that we should be asking and, and more information that we should be gathering before we make this decision. That's one man's opinion, but that's a ratepayer opinion as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, presentation to the Public Utility Advisory Board included a fiscal analysis done by IPL of their increased costs for inflationary changes, as well as inside their contracts. And they did a fiscal timeline that looked at what the utility's income would be over the next five years, as I recall, and then they had dotted lines for further. I'm sure that that report would be available, that you could share with the city council for analysis that was done by IPL. Is that correct?
That presentation was made in December, January of this year, or December of last year, January of this year, sometime in that timeframe, and received that recommendation from the Public Utility Advisory Board recommending approval to the council. We can provide those materials. I would also say, this, this action doesn't go as far as what the 2015 SOLV cost of service study recommended, which was implementation of a customer service charge and some other actions similar. Those were included in the presentation to PUAB and showed the fiscal impact of that, but those recommendations from 2015 still have yet to be accepted and implemented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Comments, mostly. So, I want to commend IPL staff for, and management, and again, Mr. Walker's office for making it as long as they have on rates from 2012. Or theoretically, since we're going to get back to 2012, possibly rates that were prior to that. And I want to say something very personal. You know, I was, I grew up in the 70s, went to Luff Elementary. We were poor, man. And I, I got free lunch at school, back when most people didn't. I, you know, we, we've had, my mom and I had our power turned off, we've had our gas turned off. My mom never received any child support, and we didn't ever take any welfare. Not easy times. So, when I see things like rate increases, I, I very much appreciate how that can affect somebody. And having represented underprivileged folks for a good portion of my career, I understand that people don't have money to put enough gas in their car to go to work, or they have to choose between a meal or paying their rent or their light bill. I don't take this rate increase lightly at all. I've not been happy about it. I've been overly critical at times of IPL, because it's frustrating to me, and I get frustrated with the rates. I get frustrated with a lot of things, but I, but I want to say this. It's not fair for us to tie one hand behind their back and expect them to go fight a fair fight. And that's what we've done as a council, not necessarily this council, but, but, but perhaps before. So, I don't know what the future holds. We have made a decision on a direction for staff to pursue, but it is not fair that we lock them into underperforming, because we have not given them the tools financially or otherwise to at least somewhat support themselves. So, again, I want to thank specifically staff at IPL for doing more with less, and I want everybody to know that I will be voting for this, but it's not done lightly. I, I can appreciate the position people are in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. City Manager, if I can ask a couple of questions, please. If we do nothing, it is projected that the reserves at IPL will be, what, in three to four years?
Below our target reserve level, so the city has financial advisor, third-party firm for our utilities. By council action, we have set a target reserve amount, and we do that exercise each year. Within that, there's an upper bound and a lower bound. Within the next three years, we will dip below that lower reserve. So, those reserves are calculated, understanding how much cash on hand do we need if a tornado comes through town, much like it did in Joplin several years ago, and wipes out businesses and infrastructure, and we're not able to generate or transmit electricity, or even, you know, business to pay into the system. So, that is why it's so critically important. It's not, it's not a luxury. It's been very carefully calculated by financial experts to determine how much we need to survive in the event of a crisis.
Right? Just like, you know, we've seen some banks fail recently, and what happened is their rainy day fund, their reserves, were not sufficient to keep the organization in a positive situation. So, if this council takes no action whatsoever, we would be below those levels and basically out of reserves cash to operate if there was, in fact, an emergency.
Yes, and I would say, I, I think this is in the council's packet for this item, but there have only been eight rate increases of Power and Light since 1989, in, in total. If you average that out over that period of time, that's about a 1% increase. In that same period of time, Consumer Price Index has gone up 2.5%. So, much like Councilman McCandless stated, when you do the math on it, that gap just grows every year and multiplies when you've only gone up one, but your expenses have gone up two and a half. So, we've reached that point over these last 30 years now, where our, our business model is not sustainable.
Right. Okay. But that was, that's the reason we're taking this action, because if we look into the future, it, it looks bleak with regards to the finances of IPL.
And, and I want to make sure I emphasize this, this is no way solving that issue to Councilmember Steinmeier's point about full transparency. Part of this analysis that the council approved back in the spring of having consultants come in and study what does it look like to own and operate our own utility versus what does it look like to privatize that, this is just buying us time, we believe, of staff to study that issue. If you look at those charts that Mr. Nail and his team presented to the Public Utility Advisory Board, it showed that, you know, the 6% reinstitution just extends out the declining revenue. It doesn't solve that issue in and of itself.
Another question was raised on audits. If I'm correct, the entire city has been going through an audit in the last few months. Is that correct?
Well, we have our annual comprehensive financial review, where a third-party audit firm comes in and looks at expenditures, revenues. Before we can close our financial books each year, that is a requirement of the charter to have the, the annual financial review. Perhaps that's what you're referring to.
Right. And so, if I'm mistaken, they both look at IPL and the city funds in that regard?
They review all funds, general fund, the three utility funds, and then all of the special sales tax funds. And then, much like we heard about the Hub project tonight, any of those economic incentive projects, funds that the city manages, those are also reviewed.
So, that the revenues that we bring in are actually being spent to the right places and go in the right buckets?
And that we are properly reporting those in accordance with best practices, according to audit standards, that everything, that we receive a clean audit on that.
Okay. And if, if I remember in the past, it was clean, if I remember correctly.
Most recent ones have been, no, no major findings. Yes, sir.
Right. So, very, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, just, just a quick comment and a question, I guess. You know, I agree with much of what's been stated up here, and certainly about the inflationary factors and, and all of that. From a financial standpoint, too, if we don't, if we were to fall below that minimum threshold that's been set, then our bond rating would be also decreased at that point, too, and make it that much harder and, and much more expensive to, to, you know, borrow any money as, if we needed to going forward. Isn't that correct?
That is another fair point, and that was a concern that was raised when the moratorium was instituted by the financial advisor, was if situations came along where you needed to raise rates in order to do that, we would have an extra step of coming to council, and of course, that wouldn't be necessarily a given, but that could put credit rating in jeopardy and make it more expensive to borrow money when the city, when the electric utility might need to do that.
All right. Thank you. It's just, you know, it's inconceivable to me that we are, or by doing this, we only are going to the rates of 2012. And, you know, we've all had inflationary factors since 2012 in the last 11 years. Just last year alone, inflation, you know, has, we've all seen it every time we go to the grocery store. So, it's really hard to imagine that we think that we can continue kind of in the, in the way we've been doing. So, I appreciate this, this effort.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just a couple more questions. We raised the, the emergency fund from 25 million to how much? Well, didn't we have a couple of adjustments in that?
Well, every year by the council action that's been adopted, we have to ask staff go in with our financial advisor and recalculate a new target reserve each year to make sure that's matching these inflationary issues, et cetera.
But we had, we had it, when I came on, we had a, a reserve fund of 25 million. The question was, let's raise it, or we needed to raise it. And this was during the moratorium, correct? I mean, we had that rate moratorium at that time.
Yeah, but we didn't change the rate. We just changed the target reserve amount to keep pace with the increasing cost of business.
Correct. So, what, my point being, or my question is, if we had that rate level moratorium, we were only in like the first or second year, and we made that decision to raise that, and now we're struggling financially, were we too aggressive with our adjustment of our, of our reserve fund?
In my professional opinion, as it was back in 2019, we were too aggressive with lowering our rates. The council at first proposed a 10% decrease, that failed. Then a stab in the dark was taken to do a 4%, and then another stab to do a 2%. I don't think we were aggressive to change our target amount, because the target is based on what does it cost to do business, which our factors is, I mean, you and I have had this conversation, I don't mean to be redundant, but.
No, it's okay.
Costs of doing business go up, and we have not had revenue sufficient to keep up with said cost.
Yeah. So, with the revenues that we had, I, I always, I felt that, we never touched the 25 million. I mean, we had one council member was here 32 years at IPL, and he asked that question. When was the last time we even dipped into the 25 million reserves? And the answer was that nothing, and there was a ti- not a time that they could remember that we did that, yet we raised it. Now, we're having revenue issues. I'm wondering if we need to adjust that back down. And, and because if we're having revenue problems, rather than trying to be aggressive, because again, it's just ratepayers' money. I mean, if we were, it, it, according to charter, we should be giving, we should be giving anything that's left over, it should be a balanced budget, and money's going back. So, I, I'm not going to get into that, but, so my question is, when does the moratorium end?
In 2024.
Right. So, we're, we're close to that timeframe. So, we're not three or five years away. It's, it's going to run itself out, and then we can make any adjustments we need at that point in time. Correct? I mean, is that how it will go, once, once that ends? That's?
If, yeah, if, if no action were taken, it would naturally expire next year.
So, we're, we're just months away from it running out anyway. So, I, I, I just struggle with some of the actions we've taken, and now we're in this mode where we're not having enough revenues, but we've made all these financial adjustments. It's their money, it's my money, it's your money. I get it. Some things need to give. I really still believe that we need an audit, and we need to have more data. That's me. I'm going to be voting no against this, but I understand the position of the city.
Anyone else have other further questions? Anyone else? Madam City Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Spheres.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
No.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And this item passes 5 to 2. And this takes us to our second reading. Madam City Clerk, could she please proceed?
Bill number 23-032, an ordinance mini-chapter 5 of the city code, business and occupation licenses, second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I have a motion to make on this item.
Okay.
I would, having discussed this with council members individually and with staff, and Mr. Walker's, Mr. Walker, I would move to remand this to staff for further consideration. There are still some questions to be, I think, determined, that we, that we have collectively. Separately and apart from that, so, we could, well, first I need, I guess I need to get a second if I can on my motion.
Second.
Thank you. Secondly, and separately, I would ask, should this be remanded and the council vote?
this tonight, if we do, the amendment would make this ordinance effective in sixty days. I believe that's enough time for us to update, amend, strengthen, change, do what we need to do to the three ordinances that are listed there, so that we can do the best we can to address some of the other concerns that folks have had about not just pitbulls, but other dangerous dogs in the city. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to make this item go into effect August fourth in sixty days, if I'm hearing you correctly, councilmember.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussions on this amendment? Any further discussions on this amendment? Seen no further discussion on this amendment. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for this amendment.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, so the amendment is applied to the bill, and it passes seven to zero. This brings us back to the main motion of twenty-three zero thirty-eight. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So as our local newspaper wrote over the weekend, that this vote is a foregone conclusion, and I'm fine with that, that doesn't really change the fact that this is one of the most difficult votes that I've probably taken since being on the city council, and that's quite simply because I love dogs. I have two dogs right now, they're golden doodles, and as I've stated in a previous meeting, I once even owned a pitbull many years ago. The dog I was probably most fond of, I had a German Shepherd, her name was Katana, and we actually lost her about eleven months and one day ago, on July the fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, happy, you know, Independence Day, right? She was the most loving dog I ever had, and it still kind of upsets me to this day every time I think about it. In regard to the petition that was circulated, I personally signed the petition, and when I told my significant other about the petition, her exact words were, well, that ban's stupid, you know, so, and she, she immediately sought out a place to sign the petition and took her sister with her. So not only did I hear from all the emails out here, I also heard it about it at home. A lot of people like to bring up Allen Hill into the conversation, and I just want to say, I don't know Mr. Hill that well, I've been in the same room with him about four different times, I've actually seen the pictures of the horrific injuries that he sustained during the mauling, and I, I believe everybody's seen the pictures on this dais, and how he survived that attack, only, I, I really don't know, by the grace of God. But on that day in two thousand and six, this city not only failed Allen Hill and the two hundred other individuals that were attacked, this city failed this community to keep it safe, and I pray that that never happens again. That's the reason I appreciate the previous modification for the sixty days out, to hopefully we can get a good, strong, dangerous dog ordinance in effect. As I stated in the last meeting, I don't have any issue with this ban being overturned, I just feel that the city council needs to be the one that overturns it, or I'm sorry, the city council does, should not overturn it, and it needs to be done by a vote of the people. In the last three years, I've told many people that I would only vote to send this issue to the ballot, and as in the previous meeting, I will stay true to my word and uphold what I said. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So in the last, since our last meeting, really, I, I participated in a, it was an HOA patio meeting in my district. I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I've heard from a, a lot of people, but in my district, I've heard from numerous people. I've even heard from some in different districts, probably would fill three rows of, in this chamber, that's, that's how many. The, the concern that you heard tonight by one of, one of our guests who came up and, and gave comments, was shared to me by several. This was an older community, and they, we went there to talk about, I thought, policing, and just some of the concerns of a neighborhood, and the first question out of the gate was, well, what about this pitbull thing? Caught me off guard, because I had our, our chief of police in his shiny uniform with us, and I thinking, they want to talk about policing, and the first question was, what about the pitbull thing? And I, and so I asked them what about it, and their concern was that they had heard through the media that the council was going to overturn this. And they said, have you read the petition? I said, well, I looked at it, yes, but I, I didn't, I, I guess I need to look at it again, and they said, yeah, we'd encourage you to do so. The, the concern that they had was in the language of the petition where it says, due hereunto affix our signatures petitioning the city council to submit to the voters. And they signed petitions, they were asked to sign the petitions, and many of them felt that they had, they were being asked to sign petitions to bring to the council a, a ballot measure where they would get to have their voice. And, you know, when a petition's language states that it is petitioning the city council to submit to the voters, it generally means that the petitioners are requesting the city council to take action by presenting or submitting a proposed ordinance or measure to the voters for their consideration and potential decision. So in the context of the language, it suggests that the petitioners are urging the city council to initiate a process where the proposed repeal of the independent city code of ordinances, section three point oh three point oh oh six, and the review of related sections are presented to the voters in some form. This could involve placing the proposed ordinance or measure on a ballot for a public vote, allowing registered voters of the city of independence to express their opinion and ultimately decide on the issue. By petitioning the city council to submit to the voters, the petitioners are emphasizing the importance of direct citizen involvement and seeking a democratic approach in resolving the matter, and they're requesting the city council to facilitate a democratic decision-making process where the voters have the opportunity to have a say in the outcome of the proposed changes to the city code of ordinances. So it's worth noting that the specific procedures, requirements, and legal framework for submitting issues to the voters can vary. The petitioners would need to adhere to the relevant legal processes and work with the city council to determine the appropriate mechanisms for the proposed measure to be presented to the voters. Therefore, I believe it is crucial for the petitioners to understand the legal framework and requirements to ensure that their efforts are effective and legally sound. Petitioning the city council to submit to the voters is a powerful tool for citizens to participate in the democratic process and to have a say in the decisions that affect their community. It's essential to follow the legal procedures and work with the city council to ensure that the proposed measures are presented to the voters in a fair and transparent manner. To me, this is an issue of trust between the petitioners and the stakeholders, or the signers, to do what was represented in the petition language, and really, what is the trust worth to all of us? No matter where you stand on this issue, we just want to be able to trust one another, and that was their concern that they shared with me, and I, I took the time over the last couple weeks to put this down on paper. But I, I want you to know, I think we can do better with this ordinance, I really do, and I think that we can, we, we have to work on the issues of enforcement. We have failed, we've failed pitbulls, we have failed all kinds of breeds, we've failed, we have failed our community in, in the areas of safety, and that's what people want to feel, is they just want to be safe. They want you to own your pets, and they want to feel safe in their home, just as you feel safe in yours. And we have a lot of work as a city to ensure that our public safety measures meet up to what the standards are going to become, because they're going to, believe me, they're going to be elevated, and there's going to be a lot of ask to be put on dog owners, and rightfully so, but I, I just compel you to think about the democratic process and allow voters to have their say. I think it's important, and I think when we went to them and asked for their signatures, and they saw that language, many of them felt like that's what they were being asked to do, to sign so that they could have their vo, voice and vote. And so I'll be voting no, because I'd like to see it go to a vote.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. Culver, could you just briefly review our responsibilities when an initiative petition comes forward and what our options are for handling, you know, an initiative petition like this?
Yes, sir. Under the, the city charter, once an initiative petition has been verified by the election board of having a sufficient number of signatures, at that point, the city is, the council has thirty days to take action, either to submit that, to put that on an election ballot, which is supposed to happen within ninety days, or to approve the, the language as it was presented. So the charter gives, gives either option to the city council, but you, you know, but requires you to take one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
The other comment I would have is just maybe for the city manager, just to remind you, as this, as this ordinance is talking, or is asking you to revisit the ordinances relative to aggressive dogs, dangerous dogs, vicious dogs, we also had some discussion last, in our last meeting about a responsible owner clause, and I would certainly like to see that language included when it comes back to the, the council.
The point well taken, I know there was quite a bit of feedback from the council about items of interest, and our staff cataloged that, and is reviewing it, and will use the, the sixty days as has been put in the amendment, assuming the ordinance passes, to work on that for, on your behalf.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. City Manager, if I can just discuss a little bit about the dangerous dog ordinance, I, I know a number of city council members, including myself, have sent you emails outlining language that we would like to have included in that item going forward, so that we have protections for our citizens, that in case we do have, in fact, someone who is a, lack of a better word, bad dog owner, that they will, you know, suffer consequences more than just a five hundred dollar fine, and there's a number of factors that we're putting into, into place on that, and I know that you and your staff are going to work on that, and then we're going to come up with the language on what we'll do with regards to a dangerous dog ordinance that's more robust and has, for the lack of a better word, more teeth.
In the three sections of the code that are referenced in this ordinance, we'll be reviewing and making recommendations on what we as staff think are best practices that will strengthen that and address some of the salient points the council has brought to our attention.
So you know that this ord, this council is going to work very, very hard to keep their teeth in this matter. Anyway, we'll proceed. Any other further discussion? If we're not, I need a motion to bring this matter forward because we've had it amended. If it was not amended, we could go ahead and vote, but we need a motion in a second to bring this forward.
I move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
We've got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seen none. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the item is approved in favor, five in favor, two opposed. This takes us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero four two, an ordinance approving a redevelopment project for the Hub Drive Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and initiating tax increment financing therein. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four three, an ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditures for lifeguard incentives at the Adventure Oasis Water Complex for twenty-five thousand dollars and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number twenty-
If I could ask you just to pause a moment, because it's hard to hear, as we've got a lot of motion, so if you could just pause just for one, I'd be grateful, thank you.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero four four, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R twelve to family residential and District C two, neighborhood commercial to District C two, PUD, general commercial planned unit development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at the northwest corner of Twenty-third Street and Cottage Street in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four five, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I one industrial to District C one, neighborhood commercial for the property at nine oh seven and nine oh seven and a half, South Crisler Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four six, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C two, general commercial and District R three, PUD, high-density residential planned unit development to District R six, single-family residential for the properties along Farmer Street and Main Street in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four seven, an ordinance designating the dwelling and its associated property located at one 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 four South Nolan Road as a historic landmark and giving the property a classification of single-family residential historic landmark R six H L on the zoning map. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four eight, an ordinance amending independent city code, section twelve point oh one point oh oh five, loitering.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I was actually hoping we could have some discussion on this item, if possible.
Sure.
Okay, so the ordinance, the updated ordinance has this reviewing and making recommendations on what we as staff think are best practices that will strengthen that and address some of the salient points the council has brought to our attention.
So you know that this, this council is going to work very, very hard to keep their teeth in this matter. Anyway, we'll proceed. Any other further discussion? If we're not, I need a motion to bring this matter forward, because we've had it amended. If it was not amended, we could go ahead and vote, but we need a motion and a second to bring this forward.
I move to approve.
Mr. Mayor? We've got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the item is approved in favor, five in favor, two opposed. This takes us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-two, an ordinance approving a redevelopment project for the Hub Drive Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and initiating tax increment financing therein. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-three, an ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditures for lifeguard incentives at the Adventure Oasis Water Complex for twenty-five thousand dollars and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number-
If I could ask you just to pause a moment, because it's hard to hear, as we've got a lot of motion, so if you could just pause just for one, I'd be grateful. Thank you. Please proceed.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-four, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-12, two-family residential in District C-2, neighborhood commercial to District C-2, PUD, general commercial planned unit development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at the northwest corner of Twenty-third Street and Cottage Street in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-five, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District C-1 Neighborhood Commercial for the property at nine oh seven and nine oh seven and a half, South Crispeler Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-six, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-2, general commercial in District R-3, PUD, high-density residential planned unit development to District R-6, single-family residential, for the properties along Farmer Street and Main Street in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-seven, an ordinance designating the dwelling and its associated property located at one-one-one-four South Nolan Road as historic landmark and giving the property a classification of single-family residential historic landmark R-6HL on the zoning map. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-eight, an ordinance amending Independent City Code Section twelve point oh one point oh oh five, loitering.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I was actually hoping we could have some discussion on this item, if possible.
Sure.
Okay. So, the ordinance, the updated ordinance has just written, there was, there was some disconnect on what I asked for and what I actually got. I'm not quite sure what happened. I have received an amended ordinance now that I, I like a lot better. However, after speaking with a couple council members today, I think there's a consensus, or somewhat of consensus, that they would like to see this go to a study session before we, before I do the amendment, so we can actually discuss it. So I'm going to make a motion to actually put this item on the, or add this item to the June twelfth study session, so we can have a discussion, so then we can do the second reading the following meeting.
So just for clarification, you'd like to put this on the study session for next week, June twelfth, and then keep it in its location, and then have the second reading the following week, which would be the nineteenth, is that correct?
That would be accurate, yes.
The twentieth? Okay. The twentieth. So, is that, is that your request?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
You guys should agree to put it in the study session.
Okay. I've been informed, we don't need a motion for a study session, we can just agree to put it in a study session, and, and then we can put it on the study session without having to go through formal matters here. So if the, if there are no, no concerns on that, and we can proceed that way, I'm personally fine with that, unless anybody has objections. I'm looking for objections from anyone?
I'll rescind my-
No objections? Mr. City Manager, you know our request there, please put it in a study session going forward, and, and we'll have this discussion.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
And I'll rescind my motion if that wasn't heard.
Okay. And the motion has been rescinded, so that allows us to go ahead and proceed to bill number twenty-three zero four-nine. Thank you, councilmember.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero four-nine, ordinance adopting the annual operating capital budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri for the fiscal year July one, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, estimating the revenues for said fiscal year, appropriating sums for purposes stated in said budget, establishing operating transfers, designating fund balance allocations, establishing the authorized table of organization, and designating those who may make a requisition for encumbrances against appropriations.
And we've got items for information purposes only, and that brings us to councilmember comments, and I'll start over here. Is that correct? Councilmember, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I just had a question. I meant to kind of ask you about this beforehand, I apologize, but we had used some of the COVID relief money for incentives for new police officers and then retention bonuses. Is there any of that money left, or have we gone through it?
The retention bonus money was all paid out to current officers at the time of the council's approval, so that has been fully expended. And then with the recruitment funds, there is still some of that available, though the action approved by the council earlier tonight for the CWA Communications Workers, some of that money will be allocated for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Been a couple weeks since we've been here, so several events have taken place. I'll speak, two of them that I was happy to be a part of, and I know my colleagues will speak to the ones that they've been at. So the Twenty-first Annual Island Fest, twenty-three, that was May twenty-seventh. I mean, what a, I don't know if anybody showed up to that, but what a fun time all day. What a great way to highlight the diversity that we have in this town, and just a great fun time. Last Saturday, we had the Northwest Independence Cleanup at five churches there. We picked up a whole bunch of trash along Twenty-four Highway, two ninety-one. A big shout out to PD, Deputy Chief Sumstead, help with traffic patrol, Officer Matt McLaughlin helped with traffic patrol. Municipal Services helped out with picking up all the trash and stuff today, and thank you for the gloves and the vests, and I have those to return back to you, so. Great turnout, good weather. It was hot, had to go to work afterwards, so I wasn't able to make it to the Strawberry Festival, so. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I too attended a couple activities, as some of the other councilmembers did. Last week, we were pleased to install five new police officers, and that was a good event, and like, happy to see the, the ranks of our staff and police office, and police department increasing. The week before that, we attended, or some of us were able to attend the ribbon cutting at the Hillcrest Teen and Young Adult Center. It was a good event, and it was well-attended in the community. It just shows how important that particular function of helping those teens and young adults is, and, and why that needs to happen in our community, so. Both really good events, and there, I know there were others, but those are the ones I'll talk to. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Yeah, nothing tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
We had a great time at the Strawberry Festival. I hope people came out and had their fill of strawberry shortcake. But I actually have a question for the city manager. I know that we have switched credit card processors for IPL, and so people will need to re-enter their credit card information if that's how they pay, and I just want to be sure you have an opportunity to just explain what that means.
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity. As you said, Councilwoman, this is a change in the credit card processing vendor. I have seen some forms where this was referred to as a new billing system. It is not. The billing system is still the one being utilized that was implemented several years ago, and it is functioning perfectly fine and well. The credit card payment system impacts not just the utilities, but anywhere where you're making a payment with the city. There's a couple things I would want to say. One is that if you're using a payment mechanism where in the past you were not paying any kind of a fee, and you continue to utilize that same mechanism, you will not be paying a fee. If you were using a mechanism where you had to pay a fee, that amount has now been reduced. That was why staff recommended the vendor that we did, because it gave us lower credit card convenience fees for customers here across the city. All of those things said, I know that this has been a clunky process for many. The finance chair in my own home has let me know her feelings on the matter, so if you think I'm going unscathed on this, I am not. So I'm well aware of the issues. We continue to meet as staff and are talking about the things that need to be done to make sure all users are able to migrate over to their new accounts as smoothly as possible. I do want to thank our customer service staff, who are putting in countless hours to answer and field all of these calls, but I do understand the clunky nature of this rollout and the issues that we are working through as we migrate over, and I do appreciate the patience and certainly hear the frustrations, and we'll, we'll continue to work with all of our customers to make sure we get them to where they need to be to have a more satisfactory experience.
Anything else? Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, we had, as a council, at the urging of the mayor and to follow through on a promise we made to ourselves last fall, had our follow-up strategic planning session a couple Tuesdays ago, and overall, I'd say it was a very good session. I believe every single council member attended. It was, we had good participation, and Mr. Walker is, just to throw a teaser out there, because this is all so exciting, he's got a big plan he's ready to unveil shortly that, that will and can impact our, our future. As we've seen tonight, he and his staff are already growing and making strides in reaching goals on that strategic plan and looking at problem-solving even in a different way than they used to, so I, I, for one, am really looking forward to that. I will not spoil the name of it, but it's going to be awesome. And if I get my way, there will be a Rocky montage involved, but there probably won't. So, I have an announcement, or at least a comment I'd like to make on the Trails Museum, and I met with, a couple Sundays ago, I met with the Friends of the National Frontier Trails Museum. That was an interesting meeting, two and a half hours, that I did my best to answer lots and lots of questions about what the future of that museum is. Well, last Friday, the city issued a press release, just reminding folks that in its current incarnation, it will be closing down, and that the Model Railroad Museum folks will be moving in as of July one. So it will take them some time to get their exhibits, to get their setup going, but we will have a brand-new attraction in there. As everybody knows, our attendance has been falling precipitously, and now is as good a time as any to work towards a new Trails Museum. However, in the meantime, and I'm going to read this, so I don't make any mistakes. Last week, we reminded the public that there was one month left to see the National Frontier Trails Museum in its current location. I want to emphasize this venue is not going away. We understand and appreciate the important role we have in telling the history of not only our community, but in the founding of the West. The move for the Trails Museum to the lower level of the Truman Memorial Building is temporary. We will be having conversations with our citizens, historical advocates, educators, and stakeholders to determine the best next step for this museum and the important story it helps us share. This is an important first step as we add a Model Railroad Museum to our list of attractions and prepare for the future of history in our community. Finally, I ask for your patience. Like the pioneers setting off from our community so many years ago, we must understand some things take time. There will be obstacles along the way, but we are excited for this new opportunity. Anybody that has any major concerns or questions, feel free to contact me directly. Happy to talk about this issue. I will talk about this all day long until you wish, you, you will have wished you didn't call me. I promise you. So thank you very much. I did not attend any of the good activities over last week, because I was in Seattle visiting my college roommate and meeting Sir Mix-a-Lot, just so everybody knows. And I did give pictures to our communications director, and I've not seen them, seen them appear on social media yet. However, I'm waiting-
If I could interrupt you, we can't make requests like that to staff during these comments.
You missed, you missed your, is this a kangaroo, are we in kangaroo court right now? Did I just get fined?
Yeah, you just got fined.
Fair enough. I did also attend Island Fest with Mr. Mayor, and Lupe Mo made these beautiful, beautiful handmade leis. You know, it's a, it's a, to, to not cap off an emotional night, but the, the Samoan culture that these kids, these are, these are high school kids, they dance, they sing, or they chant. High school kids, and these are the kids that you all have, that we all have, that you can't get off their phone for more than five minutes, that you can't get to go outside and do anything but, you know, look at a screen. And these kids learn dances, they practice. It, it is, it is one big family that they share in their culture. And I tell you, I really enjoyed it. I really appreciated being there, and I appreciated the, the, the warmness and how inviting it was. Beautiful day, beautiful folks. So thank you so much for all the Island Fest folks, all the kids that danced, everybody involved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I've got a number of comments to, not to take this evening, but wanted to share a quick update on the mayor's trash cleanup this weekend. We're moving the location, and we're not quite sure, is this true? It's true? All right. Very good. As this was printed, I didn't know we had a, a location, but to start at Bund Jack Park near intersection of North Jones and Bunshu. And as you may have noticed, the Independence Together program has been so incredibly successful. I wanted to mention that, Councilmember McCandless, with your work on getting that started. It's had a phenomenal impact. We were going to go to two ninety-one and Truman location. However, they've done such a good job cleaning that up, they've taken all the trash, so they didn't leave any for us. So we're now moving the location. So again, we'll start at nine o'clock Saturday morning on June tenth at the Bund Jack Park, and thank you for helping keeping this community clean. We appreciate that. I want to thank the council for their participation in the strategic planning session on May twenty-third. The thing that I find most exciting about that was we all agreed to do it again on July thirty-first, and we've put that on our calendars, and that was incredibly invigorating for me to see that commitment, so thank you for doing that. Handout to Hillcrest Ministries and their Independence Hall, ribbon cutting. Independence Chamber had their appreciation picnic, June first. Island Fest, I want to say this, you didn't say this, but I'm going to make a plug for it, please go next year, it is well worth it. It is excellent to see. We also had a meeting with the Eastern Jackson County Betterment Council this week, this past week, talking about all the mayors getting together, and the senators and representatives talking about what's our agenda going forward for Eastern Jackson County with the state of Missouri. And then, one last thing, I know, councilmember, you actually went to the St. Paul Church, one hundred and fifty-seventh church anniversary, they had an event Saturday night, which you went to. They also had the anniversary of their worship service on Sunday. I went to that. That is the church right here, if I'm thinking of the, if I'm in the right direction. It's this way, is it this way? I think it's this way, because it's right next to the police station. Adam, am I correct in my pointing? And, right, or this way? And so, they've been there one hundred and fifty-seven years. You'll like this, councilmember, it was actually started with funds from Hiram Young, and you know who Hiram Young was. He was an African-American who was an incredibly successful businessman in Independence. In his heyday, he made nine hundred wagons a year to help settlers go all the way to Oregon or Santa, Santa Fe, New Mexico, or whatever. He did the funding for that and got it started, and it's been in, in existence for one hundred and fifty-seven years, and it's just a remarkable church. So with that being said, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. And, Bridget.